Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to approval of the minutes from the March 19th, 2019 meeting, which I was not present at, so I wouldn't really know. Anybody see any changes to the minutes they wanted to make?
No.
No? Okay.
We approve the minutes.
Motion by Neva. Seconded in by Michael. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Move on to public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. So if anybody has anything to say about anything other than what we're going to be talking about here in just a minute or two, now would be the time. Okay, move on to staff comments. Andrew, any particular staff comments? Okay, public hearings then, and our hearing tonight is 3110 Grant Street rezone application. That's going to be from RT 2.7 to RM 2 presented by Andrew Bond from the city. Take it away, Andrew.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Bond with Development Services. This is a request from Cindy and Stephen Jensen to rezone 3110 Grant Street from the existing RT 2.7 residential two-unit townhouse to RM 2 residential multi-dwelling. This rezoning will result in a standard zoning district under Title 20, which cannot be conditioned. This is the location of the property. It is on Grant Street between Harvard Avenue and Ernest Avenue. It is two blocks south of the Southgate Mall and part of City Council Ward 4 and the Southgate Triangle Neighborhood Council. Here is a closer view of the parcel, all in red. The property currently has two structures, both of which are vacant. The area surrounding the property has a mix of single, duplex, and multi-dwelling residential buildings and commercial buildings. The growth policy recommends a land use designation of residential medium-high in an area with a density of 12 to 23 dwelling units per acre. The zoning districts which most closely align with the density recommendations are RT 2.7, RM 2.7, RM 2, RMH, and R3. The applicant is requesting a zoning of RM 2 residential, which allows 21 dwelling units per acre, which complies with the city's growth policy. Areas designated residential medium-high are areas close to the core of the community, where city services and infrastructure are readily available. The area also functions as a transition between medium-density and the core uses, such as mixed-use and regional commercial and service uses. The city's growth policy strongly emphasizes focus inward approach to development. This means encouraging denser development in areas that have existing infrastructure, approximately used services, and a central location close to the urban core. This location meets all the criteria above, except for the infrastructure front. Sidewalks will be required to be installed at the time of building permit. This slide shows the current zoning of the parcel and the surrounding area. You can see that the majority of the area is owned RT 2.7 residential, R 5.4 residential, and C 1-4 neighborhood commercial. The RM 2 zoning request for the subject property would allow up to three dwelling units on the site. This slide shows a zoning comparison between RT 2.7 residential and RM 2 residential. The three primary differences between RT 2.7 and RM 2 is the parcel size per unit goes from 2,700 square feet to 2,000 square feet. The maximum height goes from 30 to 35 feet, depending on the roof pitch, to 45 feet, and the density permitted goes from two dwelling units to three. Here are some of the views as it exists today. The applicant states that the existing structures will be demolished and residential development will take place. Now I look at the zoning amendment review criteria. These review criteria address whether the proposed change in zoning is in accordance with the growth policy, facilitates the provisions and motorizes an active transportation facilities and other public infrastructures, such as water and sewer, promotes compatible urban growth, promotes public health and safety, considers the character of the district and the suitability of uses. The proposed rezone complies with the goals and objectives of the growth policy and comes closer to accomplishing the land use designation of the area of residential medium-high density with 12 to 23 dwelling units per acre. The rezone promotes compatible urban growth because it better implements the growth policy, which encourages greater density closer to the urban core. The rezone proposes development that is compatible with the existing urban pattern of the area. The rezone accords the promotion of public health and safety by being in an area with existing public services. And finally, the rezoning gives reasonable consideration to the character of the district and the suitability of uses that are similar or the same to the use on the surrounding In conclusion, staff recommends the planning board approve the adoption of an ordinance to rezone 3110 Grant Street from RT 2.7 residential two-unit townhouse to RM 2 residential multi-dwelling, based on the findings of fact in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Would the applicants or their representative wish to speak at this time? Mr. Forsting.
All right. Thank you. Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. Thank you, Andrew. Pleasure to meet you. I appreciate having a staff report with a recommendation for approval. I was working with Jenny, actually, Jenny Baker, at the planning office, and we talked about different zoning possibilities, and we landed on the RM 2 being a good fit for this site. Yeah, absolutely. Yep, yep. And I don't know if we have any more pictures. Could you pull the aerial for me, Andrew? I didn't bring a PowerPoint. I thought maybe, you never know how many pictures we'd have. If you look at our site here, we're right across from the old, well, it's currently the Rhoda Paint Building. It was the, I can't even remember the name of that novelty shop. Hastings. Hastings. It was right next to Hastings. Yeah, that was the Hastings store. And so if you look right out of our building there, you'll see kind of a brick. Their front view out of this is a pretty flat brick building. They did cinder blocks or something when they built that building, but solid. Commercial feel there. They have an M, or they have the C 1, 1-4 zoning, and so that's pretty permissive. Just to the south of us, kitty corner across the street, that, well, if you look at like the Google Street View, it's State Farm, but I was there today, and it looks like it's an addiction services, maybe some type of counseling medical center of some sort. I don't know if medical is the right word, but addiction treatment services there. We've got residential just directly to the north of us on our side of Grant, and then we have, I think it's Moose, Mother Moose Gifts, which is a big commercial there. And then from this site, you can look right onto Brooks. And so we're right in the urban core. I would say the heart of Missoula, but there's actually a place called the Heart of Missoula, and that's at Kiwanis Park. And so this is, I think, the geographic center of Missoula. We've got bus here. We've got, as Andrew said, doesn't have sidewalks yet, but when redeveloped, it'll have sidewalks. It's currently, the zoning allows two units in a multifamily building, and that's what's there, is two units. The plan is to build a new multifamily building, and with this zoning in place, we'll be permitted for three. And so I could add more depth to the conversation, but I'll keep it short and sweet and look forward to answering any questions you have.
Thanks, Paul. Any public comment on this item tonight? Yeah, just come forth and state your name into the microphone and spell it for the record if you think it's appropriate.
Good evening. My name is Wes Appelt, and I live on Cypress Court. I'm in the neighborhood. It's easy to understand now how these things get approved because of misleading information. That picture right there, everything to the east of it, everything to the south of it is all single-family residents, or pretty much. As you can tell, I'm against this. Is it needed? I'll ask seven questions here. Is it needed? I think no. Does it fit the neighborhood? No. And you can look at the picture. You can go out there and look at it in person for a better idea. Is there parking? No. They're building whatever they're going to build, and this is the other thing, we don't know, the neighborhood doesn't know what they're going to put in there. If they change it, you know, it's a blank check. Build what you want, build as high as you want. Well, not high, but 45 feet. Is there parking? No. There's hardly enough room for any parking in there right now. These are on two one-half lots, not even on a full lot. Does the Neighborhood Council want this? No. Do the neighbors want it? No. Does this promote the general welfare of the people in that neighborhood? No. And so I put my full support against this zoning change. It seems to me that somebody should be happy with a two-unit rather than a three-unit, and 35 feet rather than 45 feet. Ask yourself, if you lived in a residential area, would you want this next to you?
Thank you, sir. Additional comment?
My name is Paul Chasterton. I live at 1905 Ernest Avenue. It's about 300 feet away from this house. And my comment is that I believe that RT 2.7 is abundantly adequate for our policy to densification. So, other than that, I will sort of mimic what Wes said about the parking issue and the surrounding neighborhood as a whole. I feel that allowing for RM 2 for 45-foot, potentially tall building, up to three units would not fit with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from planning board members. Helen.
Andrew, just a clarification question for you. Did we receive a kind of a public comment directly from the Neighborhood Council, or just from folks that are on the Neighborhood Council? Like, did we have an endorsement either way from the Neighborhood Council?
I believe we have one letter from one of the... I have a comment from Hans Christensen, and that was, I think this would be a, I think this would be a way to make use of this property a definite improvement. That was improvement. That can be found on the last page of the staff report.
Andrew, can you speak to, given that only three dwelling units would be allowed on this lot, what the likely height of the buildings would be? Would they be 45 feet?
Realistically, it's hard for me to actually give you an absolute. Usually, when you reach a certain height with a residential structure, certain building code items are triggered, which usually adds additional cost, making it more prohibited. So usually, people like to maintain the structures at 30, 35 feet, because after a while, it becomes pretty price-prohibited to build too high. They could, in theory, do that with the proposed zoning, but without a building set in front of me, there's no way to give an absolute.
Just for clarification, so there is no plan for, set yet, for what building the developers want to put there?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Andrew, is there on-street parking on Ernest?
There is parking permitted on Ernest. There is parking permitted on Haver, and there's parking permitted on Grant Street.
Jamie.
I have one more. Do you know, could you speak at all to zoning in comparable neighborhoods? Maybe like the Slant Streets, or North Side, West Side? Are they mostly 1-4-5?
It actually, without a map in front of me, it's hard to say. I know there is quite a wide range of residential densities. I know RM 145 is a pretty big one. There's M 1-R-2. And then it can go to RT 2.7, R 5.4. It just, it's very all over the place.
Any required parking of this project must be off of the alley. No street-side parking will be allowed to count towards the required parking for the project. And it does front out an alley, and that's where the parking will have to be provided for whatever gets built here.
That is correct.
Any other comments or questions? Helen.
So, Andrew, we are here again with another spot zoning request, which I'm uncomfortable with every time we get these. Can you speak a little bit to the city's priority for this neighborhood specifically related to the current zoning of RT 2.7, and what the growth policy would recommend?
So, the growth policy recommends a designation of medium-to-high. And part of the city Missoula's R-Missoula growth policy, it establishes comparable zoning districts that fall within each designation. So from medium to medium-high to high-density, you have a range of districts that you can use within that. So, the concept of spot zoning would not apply because it falls within the allowances of that specific designation in our growth policy. So it may, on a map, look like growth, spot zoning, because obviously, it will be a different color and a different name. But from the land use designation, it is a comparable and permitted zoning district within the code.
Theoretically, though, I mean, this is essentially, this is the zoning that the city has determined they want for this area, but we're not going to actively rezone other parcels?
The rezoning policy, more or less, is owner-initiated. The city doesn't, at this time, initiate rezonings. It could change at the discretion of the City Council, and we could, at that time, begin rezoning certain areas. The city will be looking at kind of an update to the growth policy. I think it's one of the five-year maintenance cycles. And that may produce new items within the growth policy and recommendations within that growth policy. But until we get directive from the City Council there, it is only owner-initiated rezonings.
Thank you, Andrew. I guess I would just like to say for the record that, I mean, this is a great example of something that this board has, you know, pushed back on, and something that drives up residential development costs.
You know, Mike Haynes said, and I think that was sent to everybody, sort of put in a solid analysis of this, what we've sort of termed a problem, or a non-compliance problem, and Andrew hit it on the head. It made a lot of sense to me, is that it would be a different story if we were talking about areas of the city where the zoning was out of compliance with the growth policy. And I think that that wouldn't go unnoticed by the planning staff. But the distinction here is, it's in compliance. It's in compliance as RT 2.7, and it's in compliance as RM 2. It would be in compliance as possibly a couple of other zoning districts, too. So it's not, it's not something that the city's going to pursue because there's not actually a problem. Peter.
So if I'm reading this current zoning map correctly, the street next to, yeah, R 5.4 is 3 to 11 units per acre. Is that equivalent to RM? Or is it more dense?
So are you referring to the property just south?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's kind of where, kind of outlined when I was describing residential medium-high. It acts as that transitional zone between, let's just say, the regional commercial and services and the actual medium residential land use designation. So within, just say, residential medium, you will have zoning like R 5.4, RT 10. You have like a wide range of medium-density districts that align with the, I just blanked on the number of units permitted in that.
So it's not a significant difference between R 5.4 and RT 2.7? Is that what you're saying?
More or less. It's about 1,700 square feet difference, and it allows that transition.
Just to be sure I'm locating this correctly, because I didn't get a chance to go there. So when you say transition, isn't the mall right on the other side? So like, transition to parking?
So, let's go to the large aerial. The...
Where's the mall?
So the mall's right here. Can you hear me?
Oh, it's on the other side of Brooklyn.
Yep. So based on the current growth policy...
Oh, you said it was Hastings? Okay.
The commercial, the regional services runs along this port, this portion of the property, and touches most of this commercial property. Directly adjacent where the subject property is located is the residential medium-high, which acts as the transitional zone between this intensive commercial development and the medium and sometimes lower-density land use designations. So it's kind of, that red square is the middle ground between the high and low.
Andrew, I'm kind of struck by the potential significance of this. It looks like, and we can't tell from the map here, but it is one of the first properties, would be one of the only properties in the neighborhood to be at this density, RM 2. Is that right?
Correct.
And so if that's the case, I mean, if the property next door, or adjacent to, or down the street, within the current high, medium-to-high-density area, if they, if we see a request in the future to rezone to RM 2, is there any legal justification for the city not permitting that, having permitted this one, on the grounds that it fits the zoning district? Am I understanding that wrong, or?
I am not a city attorney, but I would say there, if the rezoning were to comply with all the required items within MCA in Montana code-annotated, there would be no reason for the city to deny the request.
As a follow-up to that, this particular property and all the properties along Haver, and this section of Haver, somewhat may be unique compared to the rest of the neighborhood in that they're directly adjacent across the alley from a separate designation in the land use map, which is medium-density. So there is a policy decision as, you know, what's appropriate on that edge, I think, or could potentially differentiate this block of properties from the rest of the neighborhood. And so I'm curious what the, you might have said it before, but what are the range of zoning, appropriate zoning designations in medium-to-high areas?
The, it's RT 2.7, RM 2.7, RM 2, RMH, and R 3.
So where does this fall in terms of density in that range?
It is going to be a little towards the top. It's going to be 21 dwelling units per acre, which is what's permitted with RM 2. The maximum for the medium-to-high is 23. So it's a little under. There are districts that are more permissive, though.
Okay. By one dwelling unit per acre? That's the difference between the RM 2 designation and the maximum density allowed in the medium-to-high land use areas?
Yeah. It...
I'd have to pause over there. One second. Thanks. Thanks.
So it actually falls to the RMH zoning district, which allows one, this is not correct. This might be an old book. So RM 2 may be the maximum. For some reason, the RMH is not showing up correctly. That's saying 1,000 square feet. So that would not be correct, because that would be high.
Right.
But it would be one of, it would be the highest, if not the second-highest in the land use designation.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment. I'm going to support this, although I'm, you know, appreciate the comments of the neighbors. I do think that this, that actually increasing density in this area is a good idea, because the more people who are actually like living and interacting next to Brooks and these big box stores and stuff, that actually, the more pleasant these neighborhoods could become. I don't know, that's just my sense. In other words, just having more people there, interacting and, you know, and it fits with the vision of the R-Missoula growth policy that we laid out, and the land use map that we did in association with that policy. And so I'm going to support it, although I totally understand the neighbors' concerns. I just had a really tall house built next door to me and blocking my view of Mount Sentinel. And actually, it's just for a couple, and their kids. So, you know, we're going to have to put people somewhere, and I really support having people, you know, having more density. And I like that this is kind of on the edge of the, of the neighborhood as a transition zone. So thanks very much for listening.
I second Neva's comments. I think this is exactly where density should go, considering its proximity to all sorts of services, including, I mean, restaurants, retail, bus. I mean, you're near the old Milwaukee Trail. I mean, it's kind of a, this is exactly where it should go. So I'm in favor of this. Probably be in favor of it being even denser, frankly. So.
Jamie.
Andrew, looking at page nine, where it accounts for the townhome exemption development If you look at the very bottom left-hand corner, under zoning districts, it identifies the zoning districts that allow TED projects.
Are you in the Title 20?
Pardon?
Are you in the Title 20 document that's in that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can you say it again?
Well, let me first let him get there. Page nine of chapter 20, or Title 20. In the lower-left-hand corner, it's accounting for those districts that, if I'm reading this correctly, allow TED projects. RM 2 is not there.
So RM 2 would fall under a multi-dwelling district.
Okay, so it would, it could be a TED project, and it could be a TED project with only three units, without review by council.
Correct. The one thing to keep in mind, RM 2 does not, well, a TED development must be a single dwelling. So they would have to be three detached houses for a TED development to take place. They couldn't do a multi-dwelling building and do a TED.
But you could do three townhomes, literally, a stacking unit, a stacking home, which is a townhome, and they could be attached.
They would have to comply with the townhouse-style development, and if those did work, it would be similar to a multi-dwelling building, but designed in a way that a TED would be permitted.
But multi-dwelling, multi-bell, dwelling buildings are usually stacked units.
Depends. Some...
Well, they usually are. Here's my point in bringing this up. It could be, this could be a three-unit TED project, which would be an owner-occupied project. Development costs being what they are, and what the value of this property is, would probably dictate economically that it's going to be a higher-value project, and that means it's more likely to be an owner-occupied project than a rental. And to that extent, I think the neighborhood would feel better about it, despite their misgivings about something that appears to be, with reason, out of scale with what's there around it. But an owner-occupied, three owner-occupied units in this location would be a valuable contribution to a community that now suffers from the median home price of $290,000. All of which is to say that I'm going to support the application.
Other comments, questions? Okay. If anyone cares to make a motion. Have at it.
I'll make a motion to approve the... I'll make a motion to approve the request to rezone 3110 Grant Street from RT 2.7 residential to RM2 residential.
Motion from Vince. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Peter. Oh, they need discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing no additional. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Unopposed, the motion passes. Thanks, everyone. Okay. Communications and special presentations. I don't believe we have any of those. Do we have any committee reports? No committee reports. Old business?
Yes. I wanted to raise a point about our discussion last time on the land use map that we spent quite a few hours on. And I, I just wanted to, I think the most appropriate thing here is for me to let you know that after our discussion about the Laval Creek and Butler Creek area in the Grass Valley, which, you know, was, we recommended changing to, part of it to agriculture and part of it to working lands, I went back into the Fish Wildlife and Parks comments and realized that in, let me see if I pulled it up. I thought I did. That there's a section where they, where we were looking at when we made the motion and we passed it unanimously, right, about the corridor that comes down from Rattlesnake and, you know, and down to the Clark Fork. And actually, as I looked at, studied it more, it comes basically out at Council Grove. Remember, we were just saying, where's Council Grove? Anyway, the Fish Wildlife and Parks comments had that corridor described, but later in their report, they had the wooded draw, I'm sorry, I had it up here. I want to just get the name right. So there were, so they had that corridor described, but later in the report, they had two other sections. One that described the wetlands east of Deshau Road, and another that described the wooded draws and sand hills. And basically, the upshot is, in looking at that, I realized that there are three particular areas that, because they overlapped with the corridor somewhat, but we left out of our motion. I left out of the motion, and that was my error. And I just wanted to let you all know that I would be, I will be submitting comments to the, to the commissioners to that effect, to explain to them that I think these other three small parcels should also be included. But I didn't want anybody to think I was pulling a fast one or anything. So I will be submitting comments to that effect. They will be having their hearing on April 18th. And the new, as you know, the new, the updated version of that map is available now. Andrew sent it out recently. And so if anyone would like to work with me on that, or be part of making a comment to that effect, I would welcome that. But of course, I'm happy to do it on my own. But I just wanted to let you guys know that I, just because the way they made their, organized the comments, I missed it because they were, they're separated by several other areas in the, in the outline of the, the report they gave us. So anyway, that's it. That's my old business, just letting you know.
Ken, I'm sorry. I don't understand what you just said. Could you do that again?
So do you remember when...
I know the area that you're talking about.
We're talking about, right? We all agree.
I know where you're talking about.
We voted unanimously in favor of it.
And there was that one area that they talked about, that if you went there, there was ever kind of raptor?
Yeah, exactly. And it's the last remaining, with the Fish Wildlife and Parks described as the last most viable corridor for wildlife, moving from the Rattlesnake down to the Clark Fork and to the Bitterroot and the Selway. So they considered it really important. The way they wrote their report was that, and they included a separate section referring to two areas that are right next to that corridor. And when I went back and studied more carefully, I realized that I hadn't included some particular areas in my motion that I wish I had, basically. Does that make sense, Mike?
Sort of.
No? Because I don't have the actual...
You have the one area that you're talking about, that we both are talking about.
Right.
Where the pond is. And that, is that where you're talking about, where the raptors are? Let's go back.
Well, yes, the Laval.
And then what are the other two?
The, it's the area...
Do you want them included with that? Is that what you're trying to say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And they weren't included?
Yeah, they weren't. I made them an error in my motion. And all I'm telling you is that I'm going to be submitting comments to the commissioners to say why I think they should also add three other specific areas...
That were recommended by?
That were recommended by Fish Wildlife and Parks. They actually have important, the Riverine corridor goes through it as well. And I'd be happy to send out my comments, maybe...
I would be interested. Mike, I was under the assumption that Andrew was going to fix that, to include that the, that flyway or pathway.
Right.
If not, then yes, I would like to support.
That's not exactly, he, we, we fixed it. We made that motion, and we passed it unanimously. And all I'm saying is, I made it, I made an error in making my motion, and, because remember, we were looking at it, and it was like three hours in, right? Like, draw a circle there. So I realized later that because of the way the report from Fish Wildlife and Parks was written, I missed a couple of specific areas that are right next to the very area we're talking about. And I, and I'm just going to make that proposal for a change to the commissioners, and I wanted you guys to know.
I would support that. And I, yeah, I'd be, I'd love to see what you wrote.
Okay. I'll happy, I can, can I email the planning board my personal comments?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I can show you exactly some of that. I just don't have it.
I mean, given that, given that our board, I don't think I was at this meeting, but given that our board voted unanimously on this general topic, but we missed a few parcels, I mean, would it be helpful and appropriate to send a letter from the board? I mean, if we all agree on the text of what you write, would that be helpful? I guess this is a two-part question. Neva, do you think that would be helpful? John, do you think that's possible?
I mean, I think if, conscious coming from you should be fine. I mean, I wouldn't, I don't even really, I wasn't at that particular iteration of the meeting.
It was a great meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure. So, I mean, I don't know, you know, I just, I like, probably wouldn't sign on to it just because I don't, you know, it's more like in the bin of abstention, I guess, but I don't, I mean, I don't know that we necessarily need a planning board letter as much as just a comment.
I was just going to suggest that, Neva, maybe you share with us, and then we can, you know, forward it along from our own email addresses to the commissioners as added comment to the public record.
That sounds great, and that's kind of what I was after. I just didn't want you to think I was doing something weird. And, you know, as we discussed, this is, the commissioners will be sticking their necks out, making this change, and we all fully supported it, those of us who are here. And the area is also predominantly prime agricultural soils. It's also important, I think, flood control. So I've asked actually a couple of professionals to weigh in and look at the soils in the area and at the flood and hydrology issues in the area, in order to really help, help the commissioners understand the value of this decision, because I think it's really, it's really important, and I'm, you know, urge them to, to support our agreed motion.
This brings up, I don't mean to launch us back into the midst of this, but I was concerned, and I think there were other members of the board who were concerned about what this land use map was going to be used for, and what it politically meant in the future. Is this, do we feel strongly about our support of this piece, that we need either to go to this meeting, or we need to somehow underline our interest when the, when the commissioners meet about this? I don't understand what's going to happen politically at this meeting. I don't know, you know, are they going to be bombed by angry community members when this comes up? Is this just going to slide through? Does anybody have any comments or concerns about this?
Well, Peter, I think, I remember the words somebody saying, "We need to go to war for nature here," or something like that.
We're going to bat.
We're going to bat for nature. And so I think, you know, as a board, we recognized that it was going to be politically exciting, and that, and that the commissioners were going to need a true vote of confidence. That's why it was so important that the motion was unanimous. And it was solely backed, you know, or not solely backed, but thoroughly backed by the report from Fish Wildlife and Parks and the raptor people, and, you know, everybody kind of came to play to kind of really identify that one place is really, really important. So, I mean, I think Neva's point about, you know, maybe adding in the places we missed, but to your greater point, you know, I think that if we care about that place, you know, they need to know that we're supportive. And I vaguely remember that there weren't that many landowners that were going to be affected. There was only like two landowners, because this is like open space land. So I can't imagine that it, I mean, they might be upset, for sure, but I don't think it's going to be like a whole subdivision of people that are going to be unhappy.
So we just say, hey, we did our due diligence, we supported this, and this is how we supported it, and...
Absolutely. Well, we also, in our, in the motion that we passed, we asked the staff to contact the landowners to be sure that they're aware of this change that we were proposing, and I do believe it's only two landowners. It just, it's zoned for this random, you know, subdivision way out there. It's exactly what we don't want today. And we have an opportunity with this map to set a vision of what we want to see surrounding the, the community. It's just a map until we rezone. And so I actually don't know whether the fight will be now, or when the rezoning happens, but that, and, or whether there'll be a fight at all. Maybe there won't be, because as I also recall, he said, one of the owners who owned some other land in the area was primarily concerned about that other land and not as much about this. But of course, we weren't proposing a change at that point, so.
Thanks.
Remember that?
It wasn't great building land, anyway. But it was...
Join the North Valley Public Library in Stevensville, Saturday, April 13th at 2:00 PM for a fashion show followed by afternoon tea hosted by the Victorian Ladies Tea Guild of Western Montana, a group of local women who celebrate all things Victorian. The show is free, but please register in advance. 777-5061. This message brought to you by the Independent Dentist and Family Dental Group.
Overall, just one last thing, John, I'll stop. But I, overall, I was really pleased with our discussion and thoughtfulness last time, going through all those comments. We talked about every single comment that had been submitted. And so I feel like we really did do our due diligence, and I think that this is a, is a critical piece of, you know, this larger question of even like, we want density in the urban core. Well, that means that, you know, you can't have anything goes on the outside, right, on the, on that. So I feel like we finally kind of put that into place with this map, but then we actually have to implement it. So, anyway, I felt really good about our conversation. I hope other people did.
Okay. Any other comments about that particular issue?
Neva, I'd like to see your comments, if you could get, maybe send them to the office and they can send us members, but certainly I'd like to see your comments.
I will.
Okay. Any new business or referrals? Comments from planning board members about anything?
I have one comment. I've become more interested in industrial zoning as we've been meeting. And one of the, I mean, a couple of times we've had conversations in the last, I'd say, three or four meetings about zoning industrial. And is it valuable for us to talk about whether and when we zone industrial? Or is it, are we all supportive of what CAPS sends us as far as industrial zoning goes? I mean, specifically, what I'm, one of the issues I'm talking about is the dismet school discussions that we had about this school wanting more residential zoning out by it to build its population. And, you know, there are a number of us who talked about the importance of zoning industrial in Missoula area somewhere. And I'm just wondering, you know, do we feel as a group that industrial zoning is important? Or do we think it's anathema, or what?
I think that a lot of the industrial zoning has already occurred, and there is, I mean, I don't know what the surplus is like in terms of land that's zoned industrial, but I think if there was a, if there was a lack of appropriately zoned land to facilitate industrial growth, we probably would hear about it. But, you know, you figure like, we have the Missoula Industrial Park, which is not, I don't know if it's even half-built out. I really would just be, you know, totally guessing at that. But I mean, I feel like when you drive around out there, it doesn't seem fully built out to me. And I know there, there are lots of other places with industrial land, like I'm thinking about. If you get up near like Moraltz, you get near the Y, there's kind of down, and I think that's maybe Highway 10 that continues off there. Further to the west, there's industrial zone land all in there, too. And I, yeah, I guess the question just doesn't come up that much.
Well, we did reduce some industrial land use designation in our discussion last time. And I think that did, that's maybe why you're bringing that up, is that it is, was the one area that Andrew was a little concerned that maybe, you know, had been scaled back.
But I also remember that in that same discussion, we added in another parcel somewhere else. So, but I do remember Andrew saying that there was, industrial land was the least amount of land in Missoula County, or the least...
The one that was being...
Under threat, or whatever? I don't remember what he said. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would take it from, you know, CAPS and the city to tell us if there's a urgent need for more industrial land.
That area out there that you're talking about is just, I mean, it's just such a natural, I mean, the airport's there. It just, it just makes sense. I mean, if we're going to have industrial, that's, I'm sympathetic to the school, but it just seems like the school sort of is in the way. You know, I mean, growth is coming, and with the city now incorporating all that out there, they're moving that way. It just, I mean, it just makes sense to, to have the opportunity for industrial to be right there in that area. You know, it just, I don't know. My personal thought is, is that there's a lot of other places I would rather industrial wasn't, you know, where it could be, and this just makes sense for it. Just seems to be the, the natural fit, from what I see.
The place called the industrial park.
Well, and further out...
Well, and further out.
Well, thanks for your thoughts, guys. Help me, yeah, I, I think so, too. I, I felt like it's a no-brainer, the city.
I don't want to, Chris, I don't think fans should get their money back if LeBron James isn't playing because we're not in the playoffs. So I don't know that makes a much difference, but there's one thing about it. It's a premier game. I was looking, the Lakers are playing, and they're playing against their claim, they're saying that's a premier game. But I was...
I'd much rather know where, where we thought it made sense, and that I think it makes sense to make zoning decisions about where we're going to, where we're going to have industrial areas. But I just wondered if other people felt otherwise.
I think the dismet school issue is one that we're going to continue to hear about. So ongoing conversations.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, we're adjourned.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.